Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm Ron Weinhold with the Apartment and Office Building Association in Metropolitan Washington. Our address is 86 State Circle, Annapolis, Maryland. Here tonight to share with you some of our concerns regarding the county's proposed FY16 budget and the proposed tax rates, and tell you a little bit of what that means for our members who have significant presence in your county. Our members owner-manage over 112,000 apartment units in the county and over 30 million square feet of commercial office space in Prince George's and Montgomery Counties. Now, we appreciate the difficulty or the challenge in the budget of enacting a balanced budget for FY16 while also striving to meet the shared goals of improving education, encouraging economic development, and promoting affordable housing. But it's our view that while the budget proposes significant increases in appropriations for education, we believe that the tax and fee increases would further slow an already weak commercial office market and make rental housing in the county less affordable. AIOBA has concerns regarding the proposed increases in the real and personal property taxes and the significant increase in the license fee for rental housing in the budget. The proposed tax rate for real property, if at $1.11, would be the third highest county tax rate in the state behind Baltimore City and Charles County, and the second highest in the Washington metropolitan area behind Loudoun County. First, with regard to commercial office space, cutbacks in federal government combined with employers shifting to smaller office space per employee have already weakened demand for commercial office space in the Washington metropolitan area. In Prince George's County, the county is currently experiencing historically high vacancy rates in commercial office space and has had a negative absorption of commercial office space each of the past four years. The proposed increase in the county's real property tax rate will increase the property taxes for commercial property owners by $13.8 million annually, in our view making commercial office space in the county more expensive and less competitive. Second, with regard to residential rental property, your constituents who are residential renters will be hit, in our view particularly hard, by the tax and fee increases in the budget. The proposed real property tax increase will raise taxes on multifamily rental properties by $9.5 million annually, and the proposed increase in the biennial multifamily rental license from $50 to $100 per unit will have an additional $900,000 increase for the 72,000 licensed units in the county. Combined, these two actions will cause a $10.4 million residential rent increase next year for your constituents if enacted. In summary, we believe that this would be not promoting affordable housing, and we would urge you to lessen or not adopt increased tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Dinoga.
Tom Dinoga, Laurel. I attended the county council town hall meeting and Ms. Lehman's town hall meeting. I heard Mr. Baker and Mr. Maxwell make a number of claims to support the effective repeal of TRIM. They are cavalierly dismissive of the county voters and taxpayers, and their justifications are a combination of exaggerations and attention to only a fraction of the facts. You know what the voters have said for decades, and you know what they think of this proposal because they've been contacting you. Please do not join Mr. Baker in breaking your trust with the voters. First, Mr. Baker complains that the county only funds 35% of the school system budget, and our citizens are not paying their fair share. This ignores the success that we had getting the state education funding distributed more equitably based on wealth under the Bridge to Excellence Act in 2002. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for that. Low-wealth counties have difficulty funding an education budget. We need leaders that advocate for more fairness against income inequality, not less. According to MSD, our residents pay more of their wealth to fund schools than 2/3 of the counties in the state. The Education Effort Index demonstrates that we are paying the fair share of our wealth as compared to the statewide average. To do this, our taxpayers already pay the highest total property tax rate of any county in the state. We pay the maximum allowed income tax percentage. We are also one of only five counties to pay a telephone tax, and we already pay the highest rate. Second, Mr. Baker and Mr. Maxwell complain that our expenditures per pupil trail those of competing jurisdictions, but they focus only on the wealthiest neighboring jurisdictions. Compared with Maryland jurisdictions, we had the seventh highest per pupil expenditures in 2013, more than Anaronda where Mr. Maxwell was, a major improvement from when we were 13th in 2005 and well below the state average at that time. Third, Mr. Baker and Mr. Maxwell complain that experienced teachers make about $13,000 more in Montgomery County, which results in our best teachers being poached after we have trained them. MSD's biennial teacher staffing report demonstrates that this is an unconscionable fallacy. The most recent data shows that while 1,200 teachers left our schools, only 69 transferred to another Maryland jurisdiction, only 23 to Montgomery County. When the school system conducted a teacher exit survey in the mid-2000s, teacher pay did not make the list of top five reasons for why teachers left. As of FY 2014, our teachers had, new teachers had a salary that was sixth in the state, about the same as Anaronda County where Mr. Maxwell was, and well above the state average. For more experienced teachers, we are still sixth in the state, one par with Anaronda and Howard Counties. The school system has not prioritized new funds to the classroom. Even as the Bridge to Excellence Act funding began in 2004, the share of the school system budget dedicated to instructional salaries dropped dramatically from 40% of the budget to a lower 31% under Mr. Baker. For the 12-year period ending FY 2014, the total annual budget increased by $550 million, but the amount expended for instructional salaries increased by $100 million. Thus, the school system has not been prioritizing these dollars for instructional salaries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoga. We're not doing the outbursts, folks, if I need to remind you. Thank you.
That's me.
Okay, thank you.
Pete Sepp with National Taxpayers Union, address 2023 Littlesville Road, Silver Spring 20910. My organization represents several hundred thousand people nationwide interested in more efficient and effective government, a few thousand in Maryland, and a few hundred in Prince George's County. Let me just put this in perspective. There are many who would argue that there's room for taxation to grow in Prince George's County, that relative to other jurisdictions, you can tax a little heavier in certain areas. There are ways of measuring the tax burden among jurisdictions that definitely give lie to that assertion. One is a study by the CFO of the District of Columbia. They compared eight jurisdictions in this area, the district, four counties, three cities, including Prince George's. They measured tax burdens, income, property, telecom, automobile, all kinds of taxes, and they assigned, for a hypothetical family of three, a tax burden based on all of those parameters, five different income levels, too. Turns out Prince George's County actually ranks number one among the eight jurisdictions studied in three of the five income categories. It's almost tied for number one in another income category. The only income category where Prince George's County taxes are lower than any of the jurisdictions in the D.C. metro area is below the $25,000 mark. A lot of that has to do, I think, with some of the property tax relief programs at the local level. But there's no such thing as a circuit breaker for telecommunications taxes. Raise that by 50%, and those folks at the $25,000 or lower level are just out of luck. They get no relief programs. Look at the median income level in Prince George's County, just under $75,000. The measurement in this tax study I was speaking about shows something pretty incredible. The Prince George's County tax burden at the $75,000 level exceeded the districts by more than $1,500 a year, and more than $500 a year for Montgomery County. Can the people in this room afford to have that gap widen?
Okay, folks. Okay.
Even further? And again, with some of these types of taxes, there are no relief programs in place to help the poorest among them. We need to be taking a look at more efficient and effective government procedures. I will provide some testimony with some recommendations, everything from technical auditing for infrastructure to reexamining benefit programs. Let's help you.
Thank you, sir.
Please let us help you find ways to economize.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, folks. Katrina Harkley.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Katrina Harkley, and I reside at 3205 Elizabeth Ida Drive. Before I get started, I would like everyone to know that I contacted as many people as I possibly could to advise them of this meeting, and I would say 99.9% of my friends, church members, my neighbors, coworkers, had no knowledge of this meeting. There are so many residents in Prince George's County that are not aware of what we are discussing tonight, which is a total atrocity, I believe. However, I totally oppose the 15.6% property tax increase in the name of "school funding." The property tax increase would place many homeowners in a financial hardship, for example, working families such as myself that are living paycheck to paycheck, and retired senior citizens that are on a fixed income. Many Prince George's County communities suffered a devastating blow during the horrendous foreclosure epidemic which occurred over a span of the past eight years. If you did not experience foreclosure directly, it most certainly had a negative impact in the terms of a significant decrease in the value of your property. In my neighborhood, we are still experiencing foreclosures. We have numerous homes that are vacant. Some folks are barely staying afloat. Prince George's County bears the highest property tax burden of any suburban district in the Washington metropolitan area. Implementing a 15.6% property tax increase is absurd without voter approval. We were told that if we supported the casinos in Prince George's County, a percentage of the revenue would go towards public schools funding.
Okay, folks. Folks, okay.
What happened to the proceeds from the lottery that was supposed to go towards public school funding? Why not give the agreement that was made with the casinos a chance, or was it all a lie? It appears that the county executive, Rashern Baker, has found a loophole which gives him authority to exceed the property tax cap to fund schools. The voter-approved property tax cap, TRIM, which was added to the county's charter in 1978, for those who are not aware of TRIM, under TRIM, any property tax increase must be submitted to the voters for approval. Do not force the 15.5% property tax increase down our throats. To all council members, I implore you all not to support such an excessive tax increase. Please think about the residents of Prince George's County and your supporters that put their faith in you. An overwhelming majority of Prince George's County residents do not support this excessive tax increase. Obviously, it is not a good move. We will not forget during the next election. We do support the improvement of our schools, but we have to come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Sandy, 15803 Anthony Way, Booby, Maryland. I'm a 4th grade elementary school teacher, and I am totally for you fully investing in our children. All the facts and details and numbers, they really don't mean as much until you walk into a classroom and you see what's really happening. I'll tell you, I have students in my class that range reading levels from 1st grade to 5th grade, and I'm a 4th grade teacher. Do I support pre-kindergarten programs for our children? Absolutely. In a classroom with four computers that work every other day and a projector that works five to 10 minutes on a slant, even though I may want to be that innovative teacher that does great things, I can't. So do I support fully funding education? Absolutely. I don't want our children to continue to fall behind. As a reading language arts teacher that does not have grammar books, picture that. Social studies teacher, that's me, too, who teaches about Maryland with materials that still say Jack Johnson is our county exec. I'm asking you to please support funding our children. In buildings where you hope for heat in the winter and pray for air in the summer, I say it again, it's not about me, it's about the children. Can they really learn in those environments? We need funding for specialized programs such as mental health and wraparound programs. I know we have tried many things, curriculum changes, standards, Common Core, more accountability for teachers, new superintendents. We've done a lot of things, and we have had some success. However, we continue to fall short, and the children are the ones who are suffering because of it. The thing that I want us to try is fully funding education. I read an article in Forbes magazine last night that said teachers are undervalued and underpaid because the community allows it. I said, "Fine." But I'm asking you, please don't allow our children to be undervalued by not fully funding education. Thank you.
Okay, folks, all right. Mary Forch Tucker. Okay. Judy Robinson. Deborah Sell.
I want to thank the Prince George's County School System for educating my daughters. They were educated from the time they were one year old because they were both special, they're twins, they were both special needs. Because of the schooling that Prince George's County provided them, my one daughter, who they thought would never amount to anything, is a junior at Salisbury University. Her twin sister graduated from Goucher College, but I'm concerned because they still have disabilities. And according to the last disability status report put out by Cornell University in Maryland, the employment rate for adults with disabilities is only 45%. So I'm concerned that I'm going to have to keep on supporting my daughters. My one daughter has tried, she majored in creative writing at Goucher with a minor in theater. She started at Hunter College as a graduate student and was forced to withdraw because of mental health issues. She's not been able to hold a job in New York, so she's coming home in three weeks. We do need to fund education, but we need to make sure that we have a viable economy to support our kids once they graduate and come back. My main concern with the particular budget concerns is that you're talking about maintenance of effort. And maintenance of effort is a cruel stick because it means that if you can't fund it next year, you're going to lose state money. I think we need to find other ways and other income streams to fund our schools. When Dr. Metz was superintendent, I sat on her business roundtable, and we devised a, we spent a year in trying to devise a way where donors could donate to individual schools and have the money fairly implemented. It was approved by the Board of Education, and two weeks after Dr. Hornsby came in, he trashed that program. We do need to fund our schools, but we need to find alternative ways to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bobby Henry. Darrell Moore. Okay. Folks, if you could leave quietly, thank you.
Good evening, elected officials. I am Darrell Moore, resident 5708 Bell Ridge Road, Upper Marlboro. For the record, I oppose a property tax increase as first option. However, I'm very inquisitive of alternative proposals for the betterment of our school system. This is a reflection of both empathy and apathy. As a coach, a mentor, my focus is on our youth. Please help me to understand your FY16 education proposed budget and your initiative to establish true accountability of actual expense. For the record, homeowners are invested in our school system. It's a fact that homeowners are still upside down on their investment. Please help me to understand why such another squeeze on homeowners. Why not target developers and other corporations in Prince George County? Why not establish a shared cost system to offset additional cost burden for the betterment of our school system? Again, please help me to understand why homeowners are targeted as a solution for FY16 budget deficit, and why not all taxpayers in Prince George County? As an alternative solution, why not create a local sales tax? I can recall persuasive advertisements of casino as the solution to offset educational expenses. However, if there is a 15% increase today, will there be a stifle or tax break for homeowners in the future? For taxpayers that's able to sustain, once revenues from casinos are allocated to the school system, what's next? The list goes on and on. I am in favor of a better school system, however, we need better alternatives. Thank you.
I am here today to express my displeasure with the property tax increase. I am concerned that the property tax increase will have a big impact on fixed-income residents, moderate-income residents, and may also affect the number of families moving into the county because of the property tax increase. My other concern has to do with the seemingly legislative sleight of hand that has taken place that will not allow our county citizens to vote on a property tax increase. I think there are other alternatives that can be made that will allow us to increase funding for our education, but not allowing our county citizens to vote on a property tax increase should not be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Spruill.
Good evening, Council Chair Franklin and distinguished members of the county council. I'm Dean Jones, the president of FOP Lodge 89. I represent 3,000 active and sworn police officers, active and retired police officers. This evening, I stand in opposition of this budget proposal. Something that hasn't been mentioned here tonight is within this budget proposal are five days of furloughs for every county employee. That has not been mentioned here tonight. That's with the exception of school board employees. I have nothing against my friends from the school board, but they're not getting furloughed. Other police, other employees throughout the county are getting furloughed, and many are getting rifled, and that's something that needs to be taken into consideration when you have county employees working that have not had a raise in over seven years. My police officers have not had a raise in seven years, and it doesn't look like they're going to get one this year based on a negotiation process that's going on right now. That's a 5% pay cut for officers who have put their lives on the line, 100 or so who are in Baltimore City tonight putting their lives on the line to keep that from coming spilling over to Prince George's County. I am very disappointed in the county executive's budget proposal, and I believe he's taking the easy road out, and I'm asking the council not to allow him to do that. It's easy to raise taxes on the citizen and give them less services because if my officers are furloughed, they can't answer those calls for service. If the firefighters are furloughed, they can't answer the calls for service that are needed. We need to find a better way to balance a budget. It can't be balanced on the backs of the citizens of this county. It can't be balanced on the backs of the employees of this county. There's got to be an easier way, a better way to do it. If my math is right, over 64% of a $3 billion budget already goes to school board. The remaining 36% of the county's budget has to take care of everything else in the county. How much more of an investment do we need to make in education to make it work? Or are we using our resources as effectively as possible? How much further does this go? Because once this is done the first time, this has to be kept up forever. This is not a one-time tax, a one-time fix. This goes on for a very, very long time. So tonight, we dwell here in safety because the Prince George's County Police Department has reduced crime in the county to record lows, attracting businesses like MGM, Wegmans, Whole Foods, and others throughout the county. We've done our job, but yet we're getting furloughed, and we're going to have a 5% pay cut. That's not fair to us. That's not fair to us, and it's not fair to the citizens of the county who pay the taxes. We dwell in safety here tonight because the police officers have reduced crime like the county executive has asked us to do. We don't have to worry about going outside and having our cars burned. We don't have to worry about our businesses getting looted. I stand and ask you to not accept the county executive's budget proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a shame that the students who spoke earlier from the various programs left and that many of the teachers' unions left because I'm a product of Prince George's County education. 30 years ago, I graduated Fairmont Heights High School, and when I was a young boy, I wanted to be an architect. I made it clear to my teachers and guidance counselors of my aspirations to be an architect and fulfill my dreams of, like the young man from Cameroon spoke about his, you know, nice experience, and it's all good. But I went through school without any math. I was allowed to graduate Prince George's County School System with no advanced math, a person who wanted to be an architect, and that was 30 years ago. And the thing 30 years ago was the lottery. The lottery will solve our problems. It will bring us glory from heaven. And then we had stadiums. Oh, we need a stadium. Everybody else said, "No, we don't want a stadium." Prince George's County got the stadium. Everybody else said, "No, we don't want the gambling casinos." Prince George's County got that, too. So apparently, we have more and are doing less than everyone else. We say that Montgomery County pays their teachers more, they do this, they spend more per student, blah, 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 but we have a stadium. So where is the money going? I had to teach myself pretty much all that I know. I taught myself writing, grammar, reading, math. I had to take it upon myself to better myself because, for example, when I was in school, I ran for senior class president. And you know why I ran? Because I got tired of seeing my English teacher go to sleep in class. I'm serious. That's the, I'm not a politician. I ran because I wanted to run her out of the school. So I organized parents. Imagine that, a 16-year-old student organizing parents to come. Most students don't want to see their parents in school. It's not cool. It's embarrassing for your dad and your mom to come up to the school all the time, you know, being in the teachers' faces. But this is what we used to have to deal with at Fairmont Heights High School. And so now we're being sold that more money will solve the problem. Yet, now that I'm a taxpayer and a property owner, now I'm being asked to give more money that I already paid the most for to fix something that was broke 40 years ago. But the guys from Cameroon, they're not old enough to have that kind of history, and...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, all right, folks. Margaret White, then Wayne Rainey.
Okay, where's Margaret? She's gone? Okay.
Oh, do you...
It's me.
Okay, all right. Go for it. Mr. Rainey.
My name is Wayne Rainey, and I live at 11906 Mary Catherine Drive in Clinton, Maryland. But I want to say something about the teachers. You know, I came here today, I didn't know all these teachers were going to be here, but it's just good to see so many people that are so dedicated to the students and to Prince George's County. It's just excellent. But another point is about Prince George's County and money. Prince George's County is one of the richest counties in the United States of America. There are 3,144 counties. We're in the top 100. We're number 92. We're richer than 97% of all counties in America. We got the money. We have the money. It's just that our politicians are not using the money as they should use it. That's what the problem is. We are rich. You know what I mean? And just to hear so many people who badmouth Prince George's County, "Prince George's County people aren't doing this, aren't doing that." We have done a lot in this county, and that's how... We have done a lot in this county, and that's how we have become one of the richest counties in the United States of America. And another thing about government agencies, people say the reason government agencies do not exist in Prince George's County is because we don't have the infrastructure. When Ronald Reagan, back in the early 80s, and Senator Byrd from West Virginia began moving agencies out of Washington, DC, that was done because they said there were too many black people in the government. They wanted to diversify it by sending agencies different places. When Byrd had agencies sent to West Virginia, West Virginia had no infrastructure. They had to build roads to go to the new agencies. When they started building agencies in Dulles and in Fairfax County, they built them in places they didn't have infrastructure. They only need infrastructure before they put agencies in places where black people are. The reason we don't have agencies here is because black people are here. It's not about infrastructure and things like that. That's why, I'm just giving you all the historical background of why that is, you know? And then the other thing is, we did, the citizens of Prince George's County, we did what we were asked. 30, 40 years ago, they said, we want you people to pay the highest taxes in the Washington area, and then we're going to fix your schools. We did it. We followed through on what they asked us to do. Then they told us, we want you to approve the lottery and all the money's going through the schools. We did what we were asked to do. Then they said, the stadium. We did that. Now it's the casinos. We did that. We did everything these politicians asked us to do. They didn't deliver. We are a wealthy county. The politicians misuse the money. And to have all these teachers here with all these different students and everything, they need to be supported. We can be an even greater county if we get our, is that the buzzer?
That's the buzzer.
Ah!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Margaret White. Okay, folks, no outbursts. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Margaret White. I live at 1005 Elderberry Place in the unincorporated area of Capitol Heights, USA.
Ms. White, can you get a little closer to that?
Oh, thank you. I thought I had a loud voice. I'm from North Carolina. You can hear me a mile.
There you go. All right.
I just have a few things to say, and I thank county executive Baker and Mr. Maxwell, and I believe that any person who goes into a new position will try everything he can to make it work, but our county exec received a system that was full of holes. And if one elected official can change the law, then it stands to reason that the next officials that come on can do the same thing. Parents can pay an extra 20 cents per $100 for the expense of the school. We could have a volunteer. We could have a volunteer system that all the parents, all the teachers, anyone who wants to could just volunteer and pay an extra $25 a month. And parents should be required to give four to six hours a month to the school, to help out in their schools. I think that county executive Baker, if he would give funds to employers and let them hire people and pay them so that they could come out and work, and we'd stop having that give me mortality. The free stuff, especially money, just create greed and ask for more. And if we invest in employers to hire employees, I believe that our system would work. I believe we should pay our teachers an exceptional salary. There's no way in the world we should keep our teachers at $30,000 or $40,000 a year. And I don't believe that we should raise the taxes. I'm against it. You have senior citizens that can hardly get medicine and food, and their homes are paid for, so they have to choose between paying their taxes and getting their medication. And again, I would say, where's the lottery money that we said would be for education only? So the system is full of holes. If we cut out, they give me funds and invest it in employees and job training and make people proud to pay their way. More money is not the answer. I said, cut the waste, hold the parents responsible for the children. The kids are not taught at the sixth grade. They are taught at home from birth, and that's done by the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, Barbara Benfield, followed by Noe Salano, Rama Sandin, Jaron Carr, Bart Lawrence, and yeah, followed by those individuals. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Benfield. I am a 71-year-old widow who lives in the same house she was born in on Beaver Dam Road in Beltsville. My parents built that house by themselves during the Great Depression of the 1930s. The taxes on that house are now $7,440.35, and this is before the next three-year reassessment cycle. One of my friends recently got their three-year reassessment reassessment, and it went up $60,000 over the amount from the last cycle. That was from $133,000 to $197,500. I'm really worried about what's going on. This is reminiscent of what happened a few years ago when the government continually raised assessments, causing house prices to go up. And let's not forget what consequently took place. I believe we still have one of the highest foreclosure rates in the country. I am at a complete loss as to understand how politicians think they have a right to do as they please rather than as what the people want. For Sharon Baker knows the citizens of Prince George's County voted not once but twice to hold our property tax rates firm, especially since they are already one of the highest in the area. What does it say about a politician who proudly proclaims he has found a way to circumvent that tax cap with no regard as to how it affects the homeowners of this county? The citizens have spoken twice on this subject at a two-to-one margin, and if the county executive tries to get past legislation by legislation, what we have voted against by referendum, it seems he is trying to force a legal court action which would need to be paid for out of our pockets. This is not how government is supposed to work. Mr. Baker says he needs more money to improve the quality of our schools, just as we have heard so many times before when the government wants us to dig deeper into our pockets. Isn't this what we passed the recent gambling bill for to help our schools? That money should start rolling in next year, so why not wait for it? If the school system really needs more money to operate now, why doesn't our county executive ask Governor Larry Hogan for advice? Perhaps he could look over our county finance sheets to find a way of cutting expenditures and increasing income. Even though House Delegation Chair Jay Walker finds Baker's methods courageous and Senate President Mike Miller thinks it is a bold move that the majority of the county council will back, I am personally disgusted with this underhanded method of getting around what our citizens want. We, the people of Prince George's County, need to be heard. Please listen. And I do want to add that my mother was a school teacher for 30 years. I do think the schools need to be improved, but not for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Nichols.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman.
If you could pull the mic down a little closer.
Sorry about that. My name is Sandra Shirley, 1801 Owens Road, Oxon Hill, Maryland. I am the vice president of Barnaby Manor Civic Association, and will read the following letter and present a petition from the civic association. We are writing you as constituents of District 7 and 8, as well as citizens of Prince George's County, to voice our opposition to the county executive's proposed budget for fiscal year 2016, which raises our real property taxes by 15% without voter referendum as the county charter requires. Attach this assigned petition in opposition to the tax increase. Before I go to the rest of the letter, I do want to say very, very clearly, I have been at past budget hearings, and education funding is extremely important. We have aging buildings, the maintenance issues, the curriculum, the technology, but certainly has been heard tonight, there's something that's not right. And to pit homeowners against the schools for funding is not right. Something is very wrong here. Taxes are a sensitive subject to voters throughout the United States. We can look to the latest gubernatorial election here in Maryland as a testament to that. Our government must be better stewards over the tax revenue that it receives, especially in education, where 60 cents of every dollar received is allocated to education. What steps are being taken to reduce the waste in education as revealed in the recent school audits? More importantly, how does the county executive and the CEO, Dr. Maxwell, specifically plan to spend the additional tax revenue? Before we can justify approving a property tax increase, we need to see where the money is currently being spent and where additional funds will be spent and where other resources for funding can be secured. We're tired of giving a blank check with no real return on our tax investments. We've had a platform before on bringing economic development to the county. Of the $50 million designated for economic development, only $10 million has been spent to bring in a commercial tax base into the county. Outside of gaming and entertainment, what strategic plan does the county executive or council have to increase the commercial tax base? What signature industries is the county seeking to attract to our county so that the county is not so reliant only on residential property taxes for our education? Without a doubt, this is a failure. Thank you very much.
How, everyone doing, I'm going to try to be as quickly as possible. Left my reading glasses at home, so I can't really see what I wrote. Anyways, good evening, Chair and Vice Chair, and all of the council members. The reason why I'm here is because I am very, very concerned. I was taken back a little bit because I saw the magnitude of the school board here, and I was like, wow, you know, there's a lot of, the teachers and so forth are united. The problem is, no one here is against improving our schools. Everyone here wants our schools to improve. The problem is, as many have said before I came up here, we have been promised time and time and time again that if we vote positively for what you present to us, we will have better schools. Well, it's almost like, you know how you say my relative, that certain relative died, and then that same relative died again? And that is the reason why I want to be excused from my job? But that's what y'all doing to us. You're telling us that if you vote for this, this is for the school system. You vote for this, this is for the school system. But it's not for the school system, obviously, because I've been in Prince George's County for over 20 years. I have children that have graduated out of Prince George's County school system, as well as a grandson. And I'm telling you right now, I haven't seen a change. What I heard, the programs that I heard today, this evening, were wonderful. I'm excited for them. But it's like another lady who just said for me, before me, it's a shame that you have pitted the educational school board and residents against each other by saying that by increasing the taxes, we're going to improve the school system. We all must make a sacrifice. Yes, we do, but we have already. The sacrifice is on you, how you're spending the money. Because my problem is, I don't see where my taxes are doing anything. And I'm not one of those people, and I'm not saying this to brag or anything because it's not, I'm not one of those people who have a $200,000 house. My house is over $500,000, which means my taxes is over $9,000 right now. So if you increase my taxes by 15%, I'm going to be over into the double digits of paying taxes. Can I afford that? No. I cannot. So my thing to you guys tonight is simply this here. Vote no, because we've been told already that the casino was going to improve the school system.
Thank you, George Thomas Jr.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm going to try and speed this up. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity in this moment to share with you some concerns that not only do I have, but also my neighbors who are residents of PG County also. I live at 19120 Aquasco Road in Brandywine, Maryland. And hearing different comments and complaints associated, I am in fact one that's going to present a complaint to the county council. You all are responsible. A lot of this that took place within the last several years concerning, hey, please sign, come and vote concerning this casino, put the brakes on it. It's foolish. We have schools that are in disrepair that should have been fixed before we turned around and decided to spend any money on a casino. The brain scientists behind Atlantic City Casinos figured out this would be the greatest thing that ever existed for Atlantic City. Guess what? New Jersey Atlantic City Casinos, many of them have closed and out of business. Why should we spend any money, especially not the citizens of Prince George's County, on a casino that within six years from now will be out of business and closed? We're spending millions of dollars wasting our time when education is so important, but guess what? We've been lied to so much. I'm not in any position to give another dollar to PG County. For what? So that someone could turn around and do the same thing they have done previously? I've been a resident of PG County for 22 and a half years. 22 and a half years, I've seen executives come and go. And guess what? With the number of taxes, school impact fees leaving from Capitol Heights coming to Brandywine, I was told, oh, that's the best thing in the world. PG County is rich and vibrant. Guess what? PG County is only rich on paper. I don't care how many times somebody can come from another state on the West Coast and analyze and do surveys and say, hey, guess what? You guys on the East Coast are doing a fabulous job. Guess what? When you look in the neighborhood where I live at, there are not only homes that are vacant, there are farms that are vacant, abandoned properties for the last seven, eight, nine years, and the count is only increasing. If you guys decide to increase this property tax, the numbers are going to be staggering and off the charts. Please don't do it. In addition to that, I would just like to close and say that since 2010, the amount of taxes in which I received, I'm sorry, in which I was told based upon the assessment, was over $17,000 for my property. In 2012, 2013 year, it got reduced. Okay, based upon my arguing and complaining and filing for my appeal on this assessment to $4,000. Here recently, for the 2014, $15,000 year, I got a notice that's back up to $9,800-plus. Come on. When I dialed 911 because somebody shot the windows out of my house in a back target practicing on somebody's property illegally, the police never showed up.
Thank you. Cameron. Cassandra Walton. Okay, so William Burrows, Greg Brown. So following Mr. Burrows, we have Greg Brown, Darla Hines, Mike Hilson, James Factory, and
Good evening. I'm William Burrows, 8601 Undermyer Court in unincorporated Bowie. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a resident of Prince George's County most of my life. In fact, I went to school here in the 1960s and 70s and graduated from Bowie High in 1972. Come before you now as a concerned homeowner. In fact, when most of my contemporaries left the county, I stayed, raised three children here, so I have quite an investment in it. I've read that the county executive says that he needs to raise our property tax to support public schools, but this has been said for at least the last 30 to 40 years to justify ever more money, one of the highest per student costs in the state, indeed, the entire nation. More than double the cost per student adjusted for inflation as when I was here. Where has all the money gone? I do not believe that the poor performance of our schools is about lack of money, nor has it ever been. If it were, then why do so many other counties spend less with better results? The executive has also said that he can go around trim to support teacher pensions. Pre-2011 employees already retire with full benefits with 30 years of service, maybe as young as 53 if they started right out of school. Even new hires retire at age 57 with 33 years. In the private... In the private sector, those few who still have defined benefit plans retire at 65, 66, or 67 with significant penalty, about 6% a year for each year of early retirement, regardless of the number of years of employment. Most of us who are left here do not even have, who work in private industry, do not even have such a pension. How about requiring all employees to work to full retirement age for the same benefit as they get now, as we who pay their salaries must do? It is fundamentally unfair for taxpayers to support public employee pensions and benefits so much greater than their own. This is the greatest financial problem confronting this county, in fact, states and municipalities all over the country today. You know of what I speak. You've lived with it. You will know also that our properties already suffer in value compared to neighboring counties, and this will only make PG's bad name worse. How about the 28 cents per hundred cost that we pay to park and planning for which we get little but bureaucracy? A 17% increase in one year between state and county tax, we already suffer one of the highest tax burdens in the nation. Today is my 60th birthday. I come here tonight giving up that time because I believe this is so important. I had planned to stay here in the county and work until my own retirement in six years and remain thereafter, but I will seriously have to rethink this plan if this tax rate increase passes. Thank you for listening.
Folks, I want to thank you for coming out this evening. Again, written statements may be submitted for the record. In addition to or in lieu of verbal testimony, comments should be addressed to the Honorable Mel Franklin, Chairman, Prince George's County Council, County Administration Building, Upper Marburg, Maryland 20772. We are adjourned.